Okay, today it's the town of Sangaville Select Board Meeting Tuesday, May 28th, 2024. It's now 5:15 and we are all going to rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Item two, open session. This is limited to two minutes per person who would like to say.
I'd like to open it up if I can. I was bombarded a few times this week on the two-minute thing. Did some homework on it and I just wanted to make it clear the open session is limited to two minutes and what it's designed for is for the people to bring concerns to the select board. The reason there's a two-minute limit on that, it is to just express something to the board. Looking at it through their eyes, they're saying that if you bring a topic in that we've had absolutely no time to research or discuss or have any interaction with that topic, it's not, it's not fair for somebody to come in and expect a conversation about that without us being notified. So that two-minute is not just being stingy about the time. That two-minute is designed just to bring ideas forward. If you want to be in an interactive conversation, that's what the old business, new business section is for and you're supposed to notify the clerk and be listed on that section. Then everybody has a chance to do homework on the topic so that we can have an interactive conversation about it. And there's some confusion on that and I've had, as the new guy, I've had just people bombarding me over different little things and this has come up over and over and over and over and over. So the reason the two-minute is there is just so that you can bring your ideas, we can talk about it and we can either choose to answer it or list you on new business for the following meeting. Do you guys agree with that?
Hundred percent.
Yeah.
And there was some miscommunication about it and people are angry. They had come to me that we were just limiting their time and it wasn't fair. And so in the research I did, that's what I came up with for an answer.
And in the past, we have explained that over and over again. So it's just, you know, to whomever listens to the meetings and is, but we have in fact explained exactly what you just explained. So and what's happened is it's gotten more and more lax and the meetings are running longer and longer. And again, preparation prior to knowing what people are here to speak about. It's our meeting and it is for us to get done the business of the town. And so again, as you said, if somebody wants to get on and have a discussion, we need to have it on the agenda so we can prepare for it. So.
I would, I would say it is our meeting to do that with, but it's also the people's meeting. And that's where old business, new business comes in. That's where the people interact. So it's a people's meeting, but it's our meeting as well to do the town's business. I think the people should feel welcome to come.
Oh, they're more than welcome to come. They are welcome to come.
I think it should be an interactive meeting with the people. That's my opinion of it.
So with that said, we have two minutes. Whomever wants to speak, I don't see, I see Matt on the agenda. Go ahead, Brady.
Hi, I wanted to come in and talk to everybody because at town meeting, I stood up and pointed out that your general administrative budget was $90,000 over what it was last year. And my pointing out that was not to get your budget cut, but to get you to speak up and tell people why there was a difference. And I feel that it didn't go well. So I think you're probably planning a special town meeting. I don't know that for sure, but there are several things I wanted to point out that should go towards a special town meeting if that's where you're going. One is that last year, we raised money for the reval for the town. That bill has not come in yet, so that money needs to be re-appropriated. I asked that question in front of the auditor and I believe they said re-appropriated, don't raise it. The next thing is, I think that would have brought you up to within a couple of thousand dollars of what you budgeted last year. I mean, that is squeaky tight. So any prices, everybody knows that all the prices have increased this year. That's an easy sell. I think there was some confusion about moving the parks and rec to general administration. You can do that, but you can't do it without changing Trio. All those warrant articles are set up by department. So general administration is Department One. That was the, what passed for 279,000. So Parks and Rec is Department Forty and needed to be addressed separately until you change that in Trio. I think your plans to do that, I think Jeff mentioned that it might go better in public works. I think that is back where the place to put it and that next year you move it. And so all your, all your paperwork that comes right before the warrant, it shows where all the expenditures are. You need to change those numbers. You need to make that clear to people that that needs to be changed. Selling the security thing, I think that, you know, you at least get some of that money. If you do this town meeting before you commit, you can raise the money instead of taking it from fund balance. But some of that, it should be taken from fund balance. Probably the Parks and Rec can, probably the assessment should be, you forgot the $200 for the animal shelter and that was, that could easily be paid for with your doc licenses. So you don't need to raise that. You can appropriate it. Let's see. There was an overdraft that should just be addressed to $120. It just speaks to how tight the budget was and how, how close you budgeted it in sanitation, I believe. Let's see. Education, the numbers look off. I don't know, I don't know what that is. If it has to do with the fiscal year versus the calendar year, if it was tracked differently, I don't know. But that's something that probably the auditor should check and the town should check. I think those are all the issues I noticed. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, my name is Gary Pugh and I live on 140 Burroughs Road. I was in earlier and spoke with a lady about my concerns. I'm wondering if there's any provision for upgrading the borough road. The trees are encroaching on the road to what I think is unreasonable. I noticed the other day that my wife's vehicle, new to her, not new, I hate to think it was a 2024 vehicle that this happened to, was scratched the whole length because she was avoiding potholes and got into the bushes. There are places on the road where you can't drive through on the right side of the road without the branches touching the top of the vehicle, if it's a tall vehicle. Small truck, no car, no problem. But I think last year, the year before last, I put in, I submitted about getting the trees back off the road, getting ditching put in so the road's not continually washing out every heavy rain. And that's, you know, that's about all. I'm not signed in. I, I don't want to get into an argument about it, but something needs to be done about it because it's impeding traffic. If you have two big vehicles going through there in certain places, you cannot avoid not touching bushes. From, from 97 Borough Road down to the stream, especially the right-hand side, the beech trees, of course, they're reaching out there for the sun, looking for the sun and it just, and then from 97 past my place, 140 Borough Road, the whole right-hand, the whole right-hand side of the road, those are, I mean, all these saplings that are shooting out on the roadside of the rock wall, they don't need to be there. So it's just a, you know, I'd just like to know if there's something in the future of them getting the trees back off the road and improving the road. I guess it's slated to be graded down the road here shortly or something, but.
Can, thank you. Can you just address the, as road commissioner, our town manager is also the road commissioner?
Does anyone else here live on the Borough Road?
No.
You take, go Pine Street to, uh, Back Road to Dover, Olds Mills Road, down to Blackstream, and then it turns into Borough?
Yes.
Just drive through and you'll see what I'm talking about.
No, I do know what you're talking about.
It's almost a ridiculous program.
What you're talking about is the same issue on the West Road. And it's supposed to be this Thursday, but the way tends to fetch people up, can't grade in the rain. So Steve Lawson, I'm contracted with Steve Lawson this year, he has a big grader. And a lot of these roads need a big grader to cut down. You can't go over a pothole that's this deep, fill it in, then expect it not to come back. It's gonna come back.
Right.
So he's got a bigger grader. He's gonna cut those roads down. We're gonna reshape them. We'll be able to reach out in the ditching area and bring that in. So you're gonna get drains going off the road. And the other thing we're gonna do with the roads as far as grading this year, everything, everything that side over. So everything from Silver Mills, not down, from Silver Mills Road over, not counting Townhouse Road, everything over this side of town is gonna get graded by Lawson this year and we're also gonna roll it. So, because you're gonna dig up a lot of material. So reshape the road and we'll roll it with the power. And that should hold it in pretty good.
Right. In the past, I've seen it graded, but then it wasn't, then it wasn't raked and you've got, you know, holes at the sides of the soft haul.
This will be graded, raked and rolled, rolled. So that should hopefully hold it. And then if Newt's grade this fall, he's already got the shape, he's got the material, it's in the road, it's been done. It should be a lot easier to maintain.
Now, what about the, getting the trees cut down? Is that something simple that they can do before the road?
What's that?
Cutting the trees and stuff?
I was just gonna go on to that.
Is that something we can get done sooner than when the whole road has to get fixed?
Yeah. So we'll get the grading done and then we also have a contractor that we signed up for that also does the roadside trimming. And so when people like you, you're welcome to come to my office anytime. Just come see me. And you people identify these different areas, and I don't mean to use the word you people, but if you citizens come in and identify these areas, then those are the areas we can send the trimming guy to. He's got that mower and he can mow that stuff back. And the more eyes, you know, the more voices is great. So, but we will take care of those, those areas.
Yeah, but again, I mean, if you, if you drive through there, especially in Olds Mills, I mean, it's like a cave through there. And then once onto Borough Road, they're encroaching the thing. I mean, a lot of, wasn't a new vehicle, I would be a little more upset than I am. So I told her not to avoid the potholes, to sacrifice.
Take the love of the trees.
You're gonna give Jeff business for ball joints.
Paint three, you said, on white house joints.
You know, I've replaced muffler brackets nonstop. So, you know. It is what it is, delivering on a dirt road. But my biggest thing is, the trees have got to get back off the road for especially springtime thaw and for proper drainage. It's just, it's a must. So that's, that's all I gotta say. I want you guys to get on with your business.
And can you please sign in?
Yeah, there.
It's right back there.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okeydoke. Thank you. So. Item three, sign the minutes of the board meeting from May 1st and May 2nd, May 4th.
I think I'm actually approve those ones.
And I'll second that and the two of us are voting and so that is a vote. And then sign the minutes for a board meeting, May 17th.
I think I'm actually approve.
Second.
And all three of us will vote and that is a vote, three. Item four, review of the treasurer's warrants, payroll, 30, 31, 32, 33, 30, I'm sorry, 34. That's payroll.
Make motion approve that.
Okay, and we will vote and that's three is a vote for the payroll. And B, accounts payable, 33.
Motion approve, second.
All in favor? And that is three. Okay, item six, old business, competitive bidding policy review, any changes?
How about you guys?
Yeah, 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 yeah. So as far as the changes, we've, we've reviewed this and the only change that we've made is the cost. So it was really in the very first sentence, is that the first sentence?
Yeah, the 15.
Yes.
But we need to duplicate X of this.
Okay. Oh, okay, there you go. So really the only thing that we've changed, oh, and again, down here, Dale. So the number comes up.
Yeah.
We've changed this, this competitive bidding policy from $10,000 to $15,000 as far as competitive bids. And in three places within this policy, the dollar value amount is mentioned and therefore we are updating it in those three places. Is there any other, any other thing that we need to discuss?
The only thing that I don't really hundred percent agree with anymore, the town manager will publicly advertise in newspaper, general local circulations of the nature of the work, inter-services, saw and time period. Nowadays, what it costs to do that every time you want to put something out there? Yeah, it's a pretty good fee by the get to the year end. And at the end of the day, you know your contractor list. So I would think there's an easier way to get an email listing or do something so that you could solicit bids, but not have to advertise it, not have to wait two weeks or whatever. You should be able to pick up the phone or shoot out emails to be able to do this without doing it that way. But that's my opinion.
How do you feel about that? Jeff, do you have any input?
The only concern I have with it would be the, the vision of the people that it actually was put out there to everybody, you know, the transparency issue. I kind of think that, I kind of think that we need to bear that in mind. You know, if people see it in the paper, they know we've done our due diligence, I guess. They have, they have a way of tracking what we're doing.
Can you run it on the website? Use the town website?
That's what I'm, you know what I mean? I think there's other resources without spending money. That's all. I mean, we could put anything up on the town website and same thing, shoot the list of, you're gonna email who you're gonna.
So what are you looking to take out? The newspaper part of it?
I'd like to have that worded differently. I don't really know the verbiage I want, but I just, again, I mean, you advertise every time in the paper. What's it costing right now for a small ad? You know, Michelle?
Two weeks, two weeks, I think was $196.
I would say a special, a little bit of your own video as well as things.
So you figure how many times you need to do this, over here.
And it depends on how big the ad is. I mean, if you take a little one versus a big, you know, I mean, it depends on, no, the size of your ad too.
As long as it's getting out there and people can see that it's out there and know that it's competitive.
Right.
I guess that's my only get to that.
And if we get it out somewhere like on the Facebook world, social media, then you're gonna have way more people be able to see it rather than people that are checking the newspaper on Sunday mornings.
But we read them on anyway. It's on record. You know, when we solicit loan bids, we review every one of them in a meeting and they're all on tape. Same way with plowing or, you know, any of that stuff. It's always, I think you're right in taking them in the newspaper.
Yeah, and I mean, you could post it in three places also. People are used to things that we post. So, you know, the post office, the, on the door of our office and up at our, wherever, at the Emporium.
Our, the Emporium, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So that's the other thing is that it can be posted so that they can see it walking in to register something. Typically, somebody walks in the office.
Yeah, we don't use the bulletin board. We put it actually on the door.
Yes.
So rather than, I think the bulletin board on the, on the side window doesn't get anyone's attention, so.
Yeah. And.
Do you want to see, Michelle, if you can come up with something as, you know what I mean? We're talking about it and bring it back to us.
Sure.
How we can amend it. Might be easier than sitting here beating on it.
Okay. So we'll table that and we'll just try to get that one last part of, of that put together. But I think the rest of it, red, fine. Okay. We are in item six, B, old business, Edmund Gould property, quick claim deed.
Yes, so I've been back and forth with the lawyer. Edmund has stopped communicating with both Jamie and I, ignores the emails, text messages, messages on his phone. So the lawyer has come up with the quick claim deed, turning it over to Derek Grant and Jamie Klukey. They have done it so that Jeff would be the ones to sign. We just need your permission to go ahead and let him sign the deed and then I can do a check and get it filed with the registry. Jeff also wants to meet with the contractors that they have before actual deconstruction begins.
Okay, and how quickly does, will that happen once we just go ahead and?
I told Jamie that if it was okay with the board, I would take a check and go down and report the deed tomorrow.
Oh, okay, that's, that's ideal.
I mean, they've waited.
Because I know.
They've waited and waited.
Yeah, I know.
Their deadline was April 30th and.
And that has created some, some discourse in town. So that's, this would put it to bed.
Yep.
Okay.
As long as that's okay with everybody.
So this, well, ask around legal, are we actually back to net negative?
Say that again.
Back to a negative?
We are negative, yes. I think by $20 at this point, not counting any legal fees that might have.
Oh, so that's gonna be.
It's gonna be more.
And that was the town's attorney. Yeah. Okay.
That's the main reason for going this route. What we'll do is, prior to them doing their work, we'll go up and take a bunch of pitches. The town spent plenty of money on trying to get this switched over. And it's just, it's time to start the bleeding. We'll go up and take a bunch of pitches. We'll let the people do what they gotta do. And if he ever comes back and saying, I want the value of the property, we'll have the pitches to support that there was no value on the property and we did our due diligence, more than our due diligence to contact him on numerous occasions, you know. So I think this is the right route to go.
Okay, so I'll, do you want me to make a motion to have Jeff sign the quick claim deed and to move this along? So I'll make a motion that our town manager, Jeff Libby, will sign a quick claim deed on the Edmund Gould property and to, to move this process along.
That's my second motion.
Okay, and all in favor? Three in favor? Item six, old business, Matt Bachler, get more information concerning the petition.
Yeah, I'm just here to ask again about the citizen's petition for the airbag money. I really am, myself and many other people are asking me as well, why, when they voted for this and it was very clear what they voted for, why it is not happening. Everything I've found basically says, all disbursements must be made in accordance with the wishes of the town meeting as described in the article and we're here to find out why we're not doing that.
So the, the disbursements, and I keep going back to what Jerry Peters, when, when, and I know I'm talking about a different article, when I lowered the amount of another people's petition that night. And Jerry Peters brought up the fact that in the end, the board, the select board makes the decision to spend that money.
MMA says that, that you don't, and Jerry Peters isn't.
No, no, I understand. I, you're right. You're absolutely right about that.
I'll speak to it if I can. And I've spent about 30 hours this week researching this. And I come up with a few things and I just want to throw them out there. Right back to the very beginning of our manual that we use as selecting. It says, "Under a town meeting form of government, the duty of municipal offices is to execute the will of the people as that will has been expressed legislatively at a town meeting. In a town with a town meeting form of government, therefore, the municipal offices and all other municipal officials, either elected or appointed by the municipal offices, represent the executive branch of the municipal government, of which municipal offices are chief executive officers." It goes on to say the function, the legislative function itself. "The expression of the will of the people is performed by the government's legislative branch. And for main municipalities with a town meeting form of government, the town meeting is the legislative branch. Except for some very limited activities prescribed by state law, the municipal offices under a town meeting form of government may not legislate. That job is given to the registered voters of the town when convened in town meeting form. The town meeting form of government for this reason is distinguished from the representative form of municipal government practiced by main larger municipalities where the municipal officers are the legislative branch of the government." And it goes on to say, looking at the petition that Matt sent in, looking at public purpose under Title 30, Section A, subsection 5722. Public purpose states, municipalities may raise and appropriate money for any public purpose. The list of purposes is set forth in that section I just mentioned and includes fire, police, sewer, water services, public works, schools, libraries, health, welfare, economic development and celebrations. So then it goes into the authorized expenditures from the town meeting. "In addition to the, to meeting the public purpose test, all disbursements must be made in accordance with the wishes of the town meeting as described in the article that appropriated the finances for that particular purpose. It is therefore sometimes necessary for municipal offices to study the appropriation article as passed and come to an understanding of the town meeting's wishes. For example, it's quite clear that when the town meeting raises $5,000 for purposes of code enforcement, any disbursement reasonably associated with code enforcement, such as salary, mileage, office cost, training, et cetera, would be allowed under such an appropriation. What might not be so clear is whether some of the money that can be used from legal fees." And it goes down through and it gives you a few examples or a format to follow. "Determine whether the proposed use of money passes a straight-faced test. That is, can it be said with a straight face that the town meeting expected the money to be spent in that manner?" The next line says, "Ask some town people and take soundings on the issue." I promise you, I've had some soundings on this issue.
You sure have.
I have been hammered to death on this issue. And I have a very unanimous sounding on the voice of the town.
Which is why we voted.
The next, the next is, "Seek advice from the attorney and MMA legal services." And I think that's referring to just making sure that what we're asking for for money is, is correct. "And act in good faith. In most cases, the disbursement is reasonably associated with appropriation. The problem, if there is one, will be political rather than legal." So that was taken from Main Municipal Officers Manual. That is the book that governs us as a select board. With what I've read, it's my interpretation that the wishes of the town is to fund the fire department's request. And I'd like to make a motion that we allow Matt to order his equipment and fund it when it comes.
Have we got a straight answer as to why you keep saying no about this? And I mean, I know you just told the story when they asked the question.
You're interrupting our meeting. Honestly, you, you.
I'm asking what the answer was to Matt's question. I didn't get, I didn't, I didn't understand the answer to the question that he asked. So I'm, I'm asking.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor? We're not in discussion right now?
I'll second the motion just because I want to go to discussion.
Okay, so now we are in discussion.
Okay, so what was the answer?
Can you state your name, please?
My name is Chelsea.
Your last name, please?
Percy.
Thank you.
Just asking a question as to why the money isn't wasn't given to them. Like what is why not if it was voted on?
Because in the end, the board decides whether, I mean, the the board, it's up to the board to just to decide whether the money is expended.
Okay, so why did the board decide not to?
We have not yet made that decision.
But you haven't been able to order masks or anything, but you didn't give them the money, okay?
Do you want?
No, actually, Matt, you was here last meeting or last time you was here, when we all talked about this. You were supposed to get a list of Jeff, who I bought our tanks, what our dates were.
Jeff and I have talked, um and Jeff and I have sat down, had a discussion. My biggest concern, and I think everybody's biggest concern, is whether or not we can sit down and agree on something. The town voted on a dollar amount. And I, from what I read, it's actually unlawful to change the amount from what was voted. The town voted for us to appropriate forty thousand and spend that on airbags. If we say, well, we'll do twenty thousand, we're not doing the will of the people anymore. We're not doing what they voted on. We're doing something completely different.
We haven't said yet, that's what we're gonna do.
Right, um but when I asked last time, Jody spoke and said, you know, we at this time have no intentions of spending that money. It's there. So that is saying, no, we're not doing that. So I'm asking why, when everything we've found says it's supposed to be and it should be? Because it was it's pretty obvious, that straight face test, like Jeff just said, I mean, you can't tell me anybody is not under the impression that that was how that was going to go.
Oh, there's there was a resounding voice at that meeting.
So that's why I'm I'm really looking for us to follow what MMA tells us we're supposed to do.
And we're not saying we're not going to.
Okay, that's, I guess, why Jeff just put a motion for you guys to decide one way or the other.
And again, like I said, I'm waiting for Jeff Libby to give us the list of tank dates. I asked you to get with Jeff to determine, how many packs do we truly need? And what's our plan going forward? I've heard everything from fifteen packs to six packs to eight packs to.
I don't know whether fifteen or six, but.
I've heard all over the place.
Have you guys set a clear expectation or a deadline?
No, I just that's what I'm waiting for.
I think that that, though, I think that's irrelevant because we're talking about the following the letter of the law, and it says nothing about what we have for equipment. We've we've voted to spend forty thousand dollars, in my opinion, on fire equipment. And I think that that's pretty cut and dried, no matter how many airbags we have.
But you're you could spend forty thousand dollars in this fiscal year for airbags.
The thing is, if, yes, you can you can take and wait until December. But in November, there's an eight or eighteen percent increase. So the forty thousand buys four airbags now, buys three then. So now we're no longer getting what we should be getting. We already know that there's going to be an increase. We've already been told this.
Goodbye, go ahead.
The petition should never have happened in the way that it happened. It should have been a budgetary discussion between the town manager and his fire chief. Something should have been worked out, whether they were a hundred percent agreement. The fire department should never be doing a people's petition. That being said, the people voted on it. They want the money spent. It is now the town manager's job to figure out how to go about that. And whether that's to now, to later. It really is in the town manager's hands. It's something that we needed to figure out for a long time. What's a need, what's a want, what's best for the town in proceeding forward and getting all our needs met? And making sure our fire department is well equipped and well supplied. This is just a mess that should have been avoided.
Right, and so and and again, I I just want to share and um the information that we we were working on um from April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, um it was item C, air packs. So it was reported to us that um our town manager spoke with Josh Howard. Joshua Howard stated that our air packs are up to date and we've done all of our checks that we need to do. There's no reason to replace those packs until we can no longer service them. Mary Mayhew called, um she's the head of the Department of Labor in Augusta. And again, she said, we're good to go with the packs that we have as long as we do our flow and monthly checks here and maintenance. As long as we have the parts and they can run, they're good to go. There's hundreds of thousands of those two-point-two packs out there. So that's the information that that I I what do I know about airbags? That's the information that I'm working off of. Um, that's the information that we were given. Go ahead, Jeff.
I can, let me talk a little bit.
Sure, please.
Let's see, I'm sorry, let me see. So let me let me talk about something first, because we're talking about the forty thousand dollars for airbags that I mean the votes voted on. One thing that stirs me right now is the OSHA mandate on fiberglass. And I think Matt knows what I'm talking about. Collins has got involved in it, Golden's got involved in it. If that thing passes, that means any piece of turnout gear out there over ten years old has to be replaced. So if you're talking ten sets, seven thousand dollars a set, they go seventy thousand dollars right there. And that's just the beginning of it, gloves, boots, packs. So it's something for us to keep an eye on in the future, where this goes. It's very important, all these small towns, been all over the news. They had a lot of small fire departments could go under because of something like this. And you got other people talking about, they're gonna give us ten years. After ten years, what happens? Now you're still in two, you're still gonna have to buy all this stuff. So you uh really uh mentioned putting some money in a fund, to build up a fund. We're ten years away from having to buy a new truck. So ten years, you're gonna have a truck that's over twenty. That means everybody's insurance will go up a little bit. Not a lot, they could kill anybody, but it will affect the brand. So something else you need to look at is, you know, all all this stuff. But let's go on to the packs. Matt has five packs of the composite bottles, the five glass bottles, they're twenty-one years old. He's got six packs that are twenty-eight years old, those are the steel bottles, a little bit more heavier on your back. Well, the bottles will last forever as long as they pass. But on the carbon bottle side, the two-point-twos, that stuff's going away. We we've talked about before this meeting, two-point-two packs going away. The bottle should be available for a number of years going down the road, but still, he's got a twenty-one-year-old pack. Of of his carbon bottles, he has six bottles that have thirteen years of life left on. So you take a pack that's twenty-one years old, now it's gonna be thirty-four years old if it survives the life expectancy of the bottle. He has four other bottles that are eight years old. So if he has five five packs, the two-point-two composite bottles, he has to have ten, he's gotta have five more bottles. Five on the packs, five to spare. That's that's the requirement. He can't get away from that. Um, we did look at suppliers. You got there's two major suppliers of packs out there unless you want to stay and buy from somebody else. But um the people that are retiring, they're servicing Paul and Guster, those areas, a FireTech and IPS. FireTech came in at thirty-seven-nine, that's for four packs and eight bottles. IPS, they came in at forty thousand, but they're gonna give you four, four-point-five packs that are a little bit um older than the ones, the new ones. But they won. You're paying for them. You're paying for them in this quarter, basically. It looks like it's a good thing, but it's really not a good thing. Because you've still got an old pack, not even a fine ball for those packs. They're all four-point-fives, but they're older packs. The only thing I've asked Matt to think about, um he knows about this, is they're gonna change the packs. And I think that the change is gonna be minute, but I think that's where that eighteen percent bump's gonna come in. This could be a different series. And talk to Matt, all he wants is a commitment, um a commitment of don't hold me to this, you can tell me a lie, two, 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 or the four, the four packs. But he's looking for some type of commitment, maybe he's gonna get the.
Yeah, that's what I wanted originally when I went into.
So that that's my up-to-date thing that I I work with Matt a little bit, went out and talked to suppliers. And ultimately, it's up to the chief and you guys to decide, you know, what's what's the best way to move forward. And as a manager, I can't make that decision. I I can't make the decision to spend that money. I don't have the authority to spend that money, so.
Thank you, Jeff.
My concern with it is what's, no matter what's right or wrong, we've already voted and the people have spoken and I have heard from them. And my fear is, now that we have the dollar amount approved at the town meeting, if we do anything but that, we're violating the law. That's my concern.
My concern is the best way to spend that money. So for me, if you go ahead and you buy eight bottles, and it's really some bottles, that's my concern. The packs, the packs are the packs, but those bottles are all time standard. So if you buy those eight bottles, you're committing yourself to buy eight more again at the next round.
When they time out, when they age out.
When they age out.
Every bottle's gonna age a hundred percent. So the packs, whether you take the ball right out of the equation, the packs right now, we have an unknown timeframe on the parts for them. They say they have some, we don't know how long it will last. And as they get less and less, the cost that also goes up and up. Jeff and I gave you the numbers of how much it's costing us every year to keep them certified. You know, we are spending more every year as well in parts to get them certified. They're not just coming in and saying, yep, they're good. I mean, we're spending money to to keep them. So, you know, in the long run, it's just like your car, you know, how much money do you put into it before you finally say, okay, it's time to call it quits, and I'm.
Have you come up with a number yet of how many packs?
Uh, Jeff and I agreed that we need at least eight, at least eight. Ten is a safer number. And we have twelve with one that's down, so eleven right now. But with the way that everything is, I mean, you got two people inside, you got two people that you gotta have outside. As a rule, you've got a pump operator. And then in order to safely function at a scene and do what you need to do, you gotta have at least eight and a half.
Phase out the old ones, yeah, use off your investment in the bottles that you already got, you've still got life in. So get, you know, it'll give him a chance to get rid of the twenty-eight-year-old packs. And I'm not trying to sway 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 anybody, I'm just trying to stay facts here. Get rid of the old metal bottles as the new packs come in, however they come in. And let him use off his composite bottles and uh still use off. So if he's got some newer packs, those could go in the truck. The older bottles could be a spare, so if he goes to a fire scene, he's come back, he's got three or four on the floor, he can throw back in the truck to get him by if he has a second fire that day. And we do have a mutator too, so there's two sides to it, come on. So it depends on which side you're looking at.
That's another thing too, Jeff had spoke saying that the steel bottles will, they have no time date. They don't, but the thing is, you cannot keep a steel bottle on one of those packs in the truck. It can only be used as a spare.
As a spare, right.
So if I lose one more composite bottle, if somebody was to drop one on pavement and gouges it and it's a service, I don't have enough. I don't. Right now, we're at, right at it right now. So if something happens that and one of them goes down, I can't take one of those steel bottles and put it on a pack and put it in the truck. It can only be used as a spare.
The other thing we looked at is uh, you got a fifteen or twenty-year bottle, twenty-year bottle actually, and but they make a third. So instead of having four balls that, eight balls expire at one time, buy four thirties.
But you pay for it.
For the extra cost of that bottle, if it gets damaged, you just you shut yourself in the foot because it may not last thirty years.
You pay for each year of the bottle, so you can buy a fifteen-year bottle, but you're gonna, or you can buy a thirty-year bottle.
But if you go with fifteen or a thirty, all you're doing is you're still there.
Yeah.
It's still a fifteen.
You're gonna pay the same amount each year, it's just whether or not you want to wait fifteen years to replace it or thirty years to replace it.
How do you find out more about this upgrade and what it's gonna mean?
On the packs?
Yeah.
Um, talking with IPS, both of them said if, they didn't say it was gonna be this, 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 and this. They said it was gonna be a minor change.
Probably a difference in the regulator. They make these tiny little changes and call it an inversion.
Yeah, that's a problem.
I have the.
With my computer.
Yeah, exactly.
Have the chief give the.
Well, it's my only other concern, you know what I mean, spend forty grand? Anybody buys a last year's model instead of way to get the new model?
The thing is, is it goes by, it goes by addition anyway. So as far as NFPA is concerned, if they ever adopt NFPA standards, it's all the same. So whether or not they change the regulator design on this one, it's not gonna make any difference. I personally don't think it's worth paying an eighteen percent increase on one little tweak that they're gonna do. Because it's not gonna be a safety feature, it's it's a comfort or a flashy new something or other. It's just not, we don't, we really don't care about flashy fancy. It is new, safe, and upgrading as we can is what we need to concentrate on.
Can you confirm that?
The uh, I mean.
We both, come to the office, we'll sit down, make a call. There's something else I was gonna say.
I can ask them anytime and find it.
I'd also encourage whoever could help us to find a professional grant writer. I know we've been using a good grant writer, I'm not taking anything away from anybody, but find a professional grant writer where we are certified ops level or a small town and where one of the closest ones to Banham is. There's got to be grant money out there, so there's got to be. And somehow we get our hands on it because we are running a lot more calls, we are ops level and we could be called on to do chemical spills and stuff at any given time. There's got to be money out there for us, just to get the right person to write it the right way and uh see what happens there. So we got a we got a lot of options there.
Just your mentioning of the OSHA fiberglass issue.
That's gonna be scary for all small departments.
Well, I I mean, I I also think that that needs to become part, to become part of this discussion. Because if that is something that we can't financially, you know, afford, then why are we, why are you, you know, where do we start looking at that issue?
The thing is, is people, you know, daily lives, we can't worry about the what-ifs. If we always worried about, geez, what if I go to the store and I'm gonna get burned up, what if this, what if that? We're not gonna accomplish anything, we're being, you know.
But that's this whole entire conversation.
Every, every single firefighter, um whatever you wanna call it, all the federations, the National Volunteer Fire Council, everybody is fighting this. Susan Collins is fighting it, Jared Golden's fighting it. I don't see it taking place. I think there's way too much opposition to it. They are probably going to come to an agreement on a few things and leave some stuff alone because it would cripple everything and they couldn't do it. Because if we financially couldn't do it anymore, none of the towns around us are in a place where they can do it either, so.
It's eleven hundred pages.
Yeah.
Eleven hundred pages come to the agreement. And okay, maybe we're going to change these few things to make things a little bit safer.
It would change the entire concept of firefighting. It would move you to, it would mount, move you to a county basis.
The only reason that they're doing this is because they haven't rewritten it since nineteen eighty. Now they feel like they need this big, huge move. But there's so much opposition to it. I don't foresee it ever taking place, and even if it does, And even if it does, then you have 10 years to worry about it. And for 10 years, you're still, you're still gonna do something.
It's coming from the manufacturers.
So I feel like it'll push that.
Well, and that's why with these packs and these upgrades, these minor upgrades that are then not making them compatible, et cetera, et cetera.
And I know, you wanna make the right decision, he wants the right decision. It's tough. It's, it's a tough decision and, and, and...
Well, and I...
But it's the town's decision. The town were making that decision.
Right, what I'm saying, it's a tough decision.
Not me.
Right.
I think that's the biggest thing that the town is at. Like a lot of the town people, that's where the anger is coming from is because we all had in front of us what we were voting on.
Exactly.
And it was so obvious what it was. So when we talk to people that are just now finding out that they still haven't got the money, they end up going, wait a minute. What? This is not what we voted on. So that's where the problem lies. It's not whether you don't think they should or they think they should. It's the fact that we voted and now it's not, you're not backing up what the town voted for. That's where the problem lies.
And that's my fear. If we don't, if we don't fund what the town voted for, I feel like we're in violation.
And yes, yes, and a lot of people wrote that up. It's been a long...
Well, then, vote for it. I'm not.
And again, I, I don't disagree with what you're saying. It's this fiscal year.
That's right.
It's getting the right information and making the right decision with that amount of money to be spent, that's the way it should be spent.
And that's what it's...
Doesn't mean, it doesn't mean that it gets spent tomorrow. It means we make the, get the right information for us and make the decision.
And at the last meeting that I listened to, it said something about, you guys didn't think that it was more of a, a security blanket. So that's not what you were gonna use the money for. So a lot of people heard that that's how it kinda came out is you don't think that that's the security blanket needs to be used for. So you're not gonna allow that money. So I think a lot of anger came from that.
Kinda believe that was what I said.
Yeah, no, I can correct you with regard to that. What I said was, it, it is earmarked for air packs. So we can't say, oh, no, we'd rather have you put it towards a new truck or whatever. It is earmarked. However, whether it needs to be spent today on air packs is... So I see it as a security blanket. When you need an air pack, the town has voted. There's that $40,000 that's put aside that, bingo, you've got your air pack.
I see absolutely no reason, if it's gonna be in there for air packs no matter what and why, we would wait until they cost more to spend.
Still gonna buy the same number of air packs. Still gonna cost the same regardless.
When they need it too late?
They're never gonna...
You just don't wanna give up the money that they voted for.
Okay, go ahead and vote.
I mean, when one goes bad, it's too late, right? Then we're gonna wait for COVID time to get our tank? When we've, we've got firefighters and...
That's not what we're gonna do.
It's not what?
Collins has taken... To get a tank, a pack.
I've got a 60-day lead time right now. So if I work one today, I got two months before I have to get it. The town has spoken.
So let's put it to a vote. All in favor?
All in favor.
All those opposed?
What else?
So there's one in favor and two opposed to spending money on the air packs today.
That happened today.
That was the motion.
That's the motion.
That was the motion.
That's, that's today.
Can I have that line maybe?
Pardon me?
We've asked the questions. Town manager needs to provide the information.
Can I just say something here? I've been involved in emergency services my whole life. Literally. And to me, all this talk is nothing but a big delay. Every time we talk about it, it's another delay. We're talking, I don't know about this, we're talking more numbers, it's a delay. The money's there. Whether we, why wait till December 31st before we get to okay to buy it? Buy it. It's merge, she put in a cleave fee.
It's crazy that this is what we're arguing about, the safety of our firefighters.
Because to me, your timestamp, it isn't about 100% today, in my opinion. You're timestamping the future.
So?
By God.
Well, you know, he's got a 60-day timeframe on that to order if it even goes. But this is gonna be another delay. We'll talk another month. I'll come back here another month. Who's gonna be picking this around?
You keep looking at me. I'm not delaying this.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm just...
I'm just saying, it's time to...
I'm working with him now.
The vote, the vote's done for tonight. Um, but one thing I will say is, it is very important not to disseminate information that our firefighters are not safe and that they are not...
In compliance.
Pardon me?
In compliance.
And not in compliance. And, um, I, uh, that's all I can say. And we are...
I'm pretty sure that's a crime against the people.
I think it is. I think we're just waiting to get the final answer from...
And that takes me back to my fear is, this is, this is no exaggeration. I've had over 100 people talk to me about this. My fear, whatever the, whatever the petition is, is what it is. But my fear is the legal end of it and the people coming together. I've had people just red-faced, blood vessels popping right in the store screaming in my face.
You know what I had, Jeff?
Zero. Because you opposed it. And I'm, I'm talking...
I'm not opposing it.
But you're just voting right.
I voted against his motion. Um, so why, why I brought, what I brought to this?
I'm concerned about the legal aspect of it and the people coming together. And we could be in trouble if we're not following the law. And maybe we could make a motion in a timeframe or something. I, I don't know. I don't know where to go with it. I'm the new guy on the law. Therefore, I have been exposed to some people talking about this a lot.
Because they...
We've had a lot of people go outside of our town and talk to others, like other people. And they're all getting the same feedback that what we voted for was the way it should've gone and it should, it should never even be questioned anymore. So the more people that are figuring this out are getting angrier and angrier.
And I think that's the topic. We're not talking about what we're getting for equipment.
It's the fact that it wasn't to us.
The, the dollar amount's been decided and it's already been voted on. It's not...
Right.
We're beyond that.
Right.
We're, we're, we're...
You're at the point where you're the type of people...
You don't?
No.
Explain.
We were just told that there's a new version coming out. To me, that's a concern.
There's always a new version coming out.
That's okay. That's my concern.
There will be another in the next year too. There's always going to be.
The problem with a new version coming out, if it's 18% more, if you do the math on that...
Forty-seven thousand dollars.
It's a $7,000 difference. If we go to $47,000, we're, we can't do that because it hasn't been voted on. And we're not following the will of the people at the town meeting. I think we're beyond that. I think the people have voted. We should've had this discussion before it went to the town meeting.
Right, absolutely.
I think that's, I think that's where we're at. But at this point, I feel like we have no choice. To stay on a hot water and do what the people told us to do.
Right. The people spoke. You guys listened.
And again, during this budget cycle, we can make adjustments. Not today.
So by December 31st, you have to spend that money? Is that what you're saying?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure about that. I have to, I'm, I'm, honestly, I'm not sure about that. I don't know. So, um, the, the other, the other question I have, and I do wanna move on, is, um, is that we did, um, in, vote for $10,000 for, within your, for equipment?
And we all agreed that the one air pack wouldn't help us. It would hinder us more than help.
Do you wanna touch on that, Dale? No, no, no.
Nah, doesn't really get sent there.
Okay. Okay.
As well as Jeff in the budget meeting telling you guys that he would not put on those air packs, the older, the air packs. He's got 20 years of experience in the fire service. I've got 18. And he won't wear it. And I have to ask these guys. He's got, you, you're going to him for his experience for all this? Well, his experience tells you that he won't wear it.
Well, we have an air pack, she won't. That's kind of annoying.
Well...
What would you like from me and Matt at this next meeting? You mentioned a couple of facts. We can find out, me and Matt can call, find out what the upgrade's gonna be.
Yeah.
What else would you like us to look into?
I would like to know if you split the order. So if you could do two now or soon, and then do two more towards the end of the year so you could get your other four bottles, prepay, order them ahead, so they're pre, ready to be here for the beginning of next year. That way there, you would split your bottle timestamps up.
You wanna go with IPS, right?
Fire tech.
Fire tech, excuse me, that's right, fire tech.
They're cheaper and their service is a little better.
We can, we can call and ask.
I mean, that's the, to me, that's the best scenario. If you're gonna buy eight bottles and you can split it and get that out of there, then at least you're committing yourself for the future.
If he buys four packs or four bottles, he only better use two of those packs.
Right, you need to eat bottles.
Right. That's what I'm saying, buy two now, two later. Two sets now, two sets again, until it's bought.
It sounds like it won't fit the, the budget that we've approved in the town meeting.
We don't know that.
For the present reason. We don't know that, in principle.
Well, the thing is, in order to do that, I know what you're saying, Dale, which is to order two, have two packs and eight bottles come, and then prepay for the other two packs and eight bottles, but have them come in January so that the next year. The problem is, unless you prepay for all four, like, right off, in November, that price change happens. So if you prepay in November, maybe... Then, you know, because that's what they told you. November is when the 15%. So if you, if you don't get it soon enough, then you're still paying that extra amount. You can just put it a little bit on.
Yep.
So you paid 3,500 extra because that's half a year, 7,000.
These are questions.
So can I ask a question?
Yes, Friday.
You have a 20-year pack and 30-year packs?
Bottle.
Bottles.
Bottles for each pack. Can you get one 20 and one 30?
You can.
And it can extend your...
It's 15 and 30, so you can, you can. You just buy, so if you were to do that, you would just be buying your extra 15 years of life ahead of time.
Does that help though?
It helps stagger.
And stagger.
It helps stagger them for sure. The only difference is, it's gonna be more than that.
Right.
You only stagger them once.
I know.
You think it's 15, sit your 30 and just right back buy it all again.
Take it all, make it up, pretty yeah.
Yep.
So now you've got a 20-year ball that costs you 1,000.
Yep.
Now you gotta buy a 30-year ball that's gonna cost you about 15, 1,800. You scratch this letter off. He's gonna throw that 30-year ball away at the end of eight years. Four years or one year.
So they got rid of, so they got rid of steel bottles because they're indestructible. And now you've got 15-year bottles and 30-year bottles that are not indestructible, but...
We're just looking, me and Matt are looking at things that are desirable. How can you best use the town money, get the most out of your dollar, and get the best equipment we possibly can?
We just don't wanna have this argument again in five years or 10 years. We want, we wanna fix this so that we're on a good schedule looking, looking ahead.
Right, and we wanna write a budget that includes these costs.
Yes.
So that we can anticipate these costs and budget for these costs. And, and that's where we are not at right now.
It should've been done for years, and it wasn't. And that was the problem. The chiefs would put in extra money for equipment, but they wouldn't specify to you what it was for. But it was for buying an air pack or two a year so we didn't have this situation. And when they didn't specify that to you guys, you would take that money out, say, oh, we don't need that much for equipment. So then an air pack wasn't bought. And you do that for 15 years.
That's not really how that went, but...
It is for the last five that I know of.
Well, you have a big business now.
It wasn't through the selectmen, so...
You have a town manager who understands the fire department needs.
Right, and that is very, very, very important to us. Yes.
And you're the first one, Matt, that we've asked for lists and all of this stuff that's actually been provided to the town.
I, I hate that I'm the one that has to deal with it because this isn't my mess. I'm picking up the mess.
Well, and that's what, that's, that's when you take on a role.
But we have to...
Unfortunately, that's what you have to deal with.
But, but we have to, we have to do it.
Right.
That's right. Exactly. And you need to work with us.
I've tried to work with you guys, Joe. I came to that budget meeting with all kinds of options. And you guys all just said, no, no, no. We took that 13,000 out of the payroll. We could've added 4,000 to it and we could've bought every single one of them brand new and been done with it with a municipal lease.
Well, that, that was...
That's a different...
Yeah, that's a whole nother, that, that did not... Well, yes, it is.
It's taking the budget from 58,000 to 62,000 a year and we have brand new everything. And we're at 60 right now.
Let's think then.
So I've, I've been trying to work with you guys. I did not wanna go this route, but these guys all work their 50-hour a week job. They come in here, they leave their house, they leave their kids.
Yeah.
They put the air pack on. It deserved, they deserve to know that it is 100% good. I understand you're getting the information from people saying that they are still certified. Yes, they are. But there's a whole lot more that goes to that.
And the town people knew that they were certified and voted to still give you money for the other pack.
You guys sent out a flyer. Everybody in town got to see it. They got to read it. They still voted this way.
Okay. All right, we're moving on. Item seven, new business remote telecommunication meetings slash voting policy. Did, were you able to get a, anything, um, from...
Oh, I didn't send, I thought I sent it to you.
Oh, via email?[1597.24] Oh, via email?
I think so.
Okay, I did not get, did anyone get it?
I'll resend it.
I didn't see it.
Okay.
Also, I talked to Matt, he does have Wi-Fi here.
You do?
We just doubled the speed.
Not very fast.
He said it weren't very fast, so we just doubled the speed, so...
Is it through, are the same that we have down in downtown?
Yes.
Down, the same?
Premium choice. So he should see, he should see a bump in his speed. I don't know if they've got it done yet or not.
Okay.
I thought I sent that to you. I didn't, I thought it was nice.
Okay, um, because as of now, I, we could get internet in this building, couldn't we? I don't know.
Yeah, we had Wi-Fi.
You did?
No, it said we had Wi-Fi.
Right. Um, because one of the issues is being able to remotely attend these meetings and vote. And right now, you have to, in order to be able to, to vote, you have to, it's gotta be visual.
You're talking selectmen, voting in a select meeting.
Correct. So we need to enact that, so, but we need a policy, Jeff.
I've got it ready on.
Oh, okay, okay, that'd be great. So you'll send it to us? And, and if you just, we'll table it for tonight and bring it on to, please, Michelle?
Yeah.
Onto the next meeting, because that's something important, it's gonna be important. And B, we'll move on, any other conversation about that? Naming of a road off Ames Lane suggested Memory Lane.
Cynthia Charlie is her nickname.
Quimby.
She evidently has now made a residence up there, and the road is long enough that we need to name it. So her suggestion was Memory Lane, but the board has to give its blessing for us to move forward with 911.
That's not all on her property?
Is this all property, Mel?
No, um, she said it was off Ames Lane, whereas that is...
It goes up over the ball field, you see.
Yeah.
So, and it can't continue to be Ames Lane? It, it, what, it truncates off, or what's the issue?
I believe it, it's off that.
Okay, oh, it does, okay.
But does it turn off at the driveway, on the property?
I don't know.
So we need to send somebody out to double-check?
Yeah.
Yeah, because it's...
I don't know if it actually goes by and then it goes to them, or does it just kinda go into that?
I haven't seen one of the driveways with the new can.
Me neither. I mean, I haven't been there since the old days. No.
Okay.
I'll override it.
So we'll bring, as I say, yeah, we can, we'll bring this back next meeting, okay?
Yeah, and just to clarify, so the suggestion is Memory Lane, not the Cynthia Charlie Quimby, right?
That's right, Memory Lane. Cynthia is the one requesting.
Ah, gotcha, okay, I understand. Alright, so, okay. And clearly, there are no other roads in Central Lane, Memory Lane, at this point? Okay, okay, yeah, so we'll just clarify that as far as... So if it turns, if it, it turns off of Ames Lane onto her property, then it would not need a separate road name, correct? It would just need the end of Ames Lane?
Pretty sure, it's just a driveway then, it's not a road. It's only a road if you're crossing through other people's property that...
Right, right. So we'll just make sure about that, yeah.
We'll, we'll do more research.
I mean, if it's a driveway, she can call up there if she wants.
Well, and I'm not sure, Sam has done the class. You can't, 911, you have to actually have a class. They come and teach you how to use it, and she's been trying very diligently to get this all done. So I'll send her out with the wheel, and maybe get with you as to where that road is exactly. She showed me on the map, but maps don't get the real picture.
Okay, okay. Alright, so we'll revisit that again.
Okay.
Item 8, town manager's report.
So, the Road Assistance, last year we got 34,100. This year we're getting 39,324. You don't have to fill out any special form for it anymore, you can get it automatically. They send you an email whether you answer it or not, you still get the money. So we do have that money coming into the budget.
Jeff, excuse me, is it, is that the LRAP money? L-R-A-P?
This is Road Assistance.
Local road?
Yes, local Road Assistance, LRAP.
LRAP, okay, good, that's good news.
FEMA, FEMA grant process, not grant, but FEMA process here in town for all the roads and the money, and by putting all the roads in repairs. That is pretty well finalized. I'll get one more call next Thursday from her finalizing all the paperwork. Call the committee to sign off from the cemetery dealing with FEMA. If we want to pursue the cemetery, which I strongly suggest we don't, we have to have two engineering studies, that's gonna be expensive. And that engineering study's gonna have to say, "Well, we have to have done to it, and we're only gonna fix the 150 feet." If we have the engineering companies come, and they look at that, and they say, "This isn't gonna affect the road for X number of years." You put all that money into that engineering fee, and you're not getting nothing back from FEMA. So it would be my suggestion to the board that we don't pursue that part of the site. Leave it, leave it blocked off, because they won't fix any of the rest of it down the bank. It will be that little specific area.
So just don't address it?
Right.
Not through them?
Not through FEMA?
Right.
Okay, okay.
Because you're gonna have a lot of money into it, and you're not gonna get nothing out of it.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah, the whole thing needs to be addressed.
Needs to be addressed, yeah, okay, okay. Got it, I understand.
Because you've got the salmon restoration you have to worry about, you have to address that. You have to address the concrete plant. You have to address the cemetery. All of that has to be addressed in that, that study. And it's gonna be super expensive, and you're not gonna get very much. She said it could be 10, 15 years for you seeing the money.
Whoa.
So I would, I suggest not doing it through, I'd find other means if you could.
Okay, okay. So that is gonna be something we're gonna need to look to find some grant money for something like that?
That's road, that's road. And Gold Property, we already talked about that, that'll be taken care of. Fire Station In-N-Out, we talked about that, that's gonna speed up. Oh, what's the name of that road? Honeywell Ave. Honeywell Ave, as you go up it from the town office, I'm already inside, it's starting to cave in. You see an Emax there, it's been dig saved. Scott Reynolds is gonna come dig it, and he'll get the sanitary district, it's not football. There's something happening there because the road caved in even further up.
Oh, wow.
So we put two yards of stone in it the other day. If we get dry weather, Scott will dig it. So if, if he doesn't get it this week, he's going to another job, he'll come back, and we'll, we'll get to it. There's some type of issue there, it's been there for a long, long time. So I don't know exactly what's happening there. Millard and Marjorie Smart Trust Fund. We got some paperwork from the lawyer a week before last, or last week, and it took me a few days to get a hold of them. It looked like we were gonna be on the hook for a whole bunch of money. There was all these bills that went down through, and so I had to call and make a classification. What's all these numbers, you know, how much is left in the fund, blah, blah, blah? All that money came out of the fund. And they sent us a document, I had to sign it before signing, I wanted to make sure we weren't gonna pay a whole bunch of money. Bottom line, it all came out of the fund, and it's split amongst the church, us, and some other people, so...
And that wasn't, that wasn't the school, was that the school one, Dale? Wasn't it the one that funded, you know, the, the...
For education.
Yeah, for education, yeah, yeah.
$2,000, I think we anticipate coming.
Right, right, okay.
To defer the education costs.
Right, okay, so that's okay, Jeff?
That's now done?
Yeah, we're good.
We're good.
Right, but is the way you explained that...
I know.
Is it still ongoing, or did that fund...
It's a done deal.
It's all over now?
It's all over.
No more money?
Money's been transferred, it's under a new name.
This is when Bank of America was... One of them was getting done.
Okay, but the trust is still there, we're still gonna get the 2,000 ongoing in the future. That's what I wanna make sure of.
Good, yeah. Where, where was it moved to?
Was it potential to get them?
Oh, okay, okay.
It was went from one bank to another bank.
Okay.
So they transferred the trust over completely to another bank. Wanta City Bank of America was involved somewhere along the way.
Okay, so we're good there?
We're good with that. Just wanted to make sure we're good, we signed off on it, we sent it in. I know we're running late, I wanted to go with the information that we gathered from the town hall. If you don't wanna do that tonight, we can put it off till next.
Just a question, I know that we were concerned about the school. Do we know what time that, that, that meeting is going on tonight?
That was last week.
Oh, that was last night?
That was the meeting that was...
Last night?
Yes, last week.
Oh, 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 okay, I'm sorry.
That phase, and we rescheduled.
I gotcha, I understand.
We anticipate 9%, it looks like it's gonna be 12% if it passes.
The school budget? So do we know that number, Michelle?
Yeah, we have to vote on that. We don't know, yeah, because dual level, their ballot comes out with the federal and state ballot, so we will vote as a public and report back, and then they'll, they'll give us what our prices is.
So that'll be a vote up at Grace?
Grace Bible, yeah.
June 11?
Yeah.
The printout's at my office, if you wanna look at it, it shows all the breakdown and everything. That's 12.3%, we anticipated 9%.
So we don't have that dollar amount tonight?
No, no, in fact, I didn't realize...
That's fine.
What Jeff said as a percentage, I had been told like 9. something.
Well, that was the...
That's what they were trying for. So you think that was, can we back complete?
Yeah.
1. something.
Okay, that's a concern, okay.
If we don't wanna do this tonight, we'll table this with you. It'll take me about 10 minutes.
Oh, then, absolutely, that's what we're here for.
So I just wanted to bring everybody up to speed on the board. I was asked to look at certain things and do certain things with the building and engineering and stuff, so... Looking at the, the town hall here, there's been a committee since 1992. From 1992 to 2018, we spent anywheres from 355,000 to 415,000 dollars on this building over here. Today, so far. Some of the things that keep coming up, roof issues, drainage issues, parking lot foundation in the foundation. This is foundation folder, this is foundation folder, this is foundation folder, this is foundation folder, all over the years. So we're dealing with the same problem all the time. And I'm not saying on one side or the other here. Really what started the ball, well, when everybody's seen it's the MMA, it's the MMA report. Back in 2019, we got this, this report here, October 23. This is all in my office, if you wanna look at it. They had two contractors look at it. Both contractors expressed their opinion that there were indeed structural issues that must be addressed. Their opinion was immediate action. That was in 2019. And I'm gonna tie this all together at the end here. So Cappin is at that time in 2019, estimated between 400 and 600,000 dollars to fix the foundation, another 200,000 dollars in stabilizing the rest of, rest of the building. 2019, again, this was MMA. This is Cappin's Associates right here. They were called in to look at it. Things they addressed was the beams, the joists, and the rafters. Beams have some arches in, and that's gonna be addressed. Add additional columns. Why do we gotta have additional columns? Because of the balconies upstairs, blah, blah, blah. Exterior drainage, here we're going back to drainage again. The lay of the land is putting water against the building, which is, again, affecting the foundation. They said other alternatives to invest in the cost of repairs would be to build a new facility that was on here, is a recommendation. So you'd put a lot of money into that, they had to put a lot of money into a new facility. This is Wentworth Associates. These people were recommended by an engineering firm to me that deal with aging buildings. This is what they do for work, is older buildings. They notice, again, movement of the foundation, improper grading, drainage, exhibits extreme Boeing, most of us know that, the Ad Hoc Committee. You know, it's all general knowledge, but there is engineering stuff on it that we went and looked at, had me look at it. Conclusion is the opinion of our firm, that the building is uninhabitable at this time because they're concerned about the instability. Existing walls supported and waterproof by design. And they're talking about the wall, walls, the water coming through the walls. They, they recommend a licensed engineer that deals with waterproofing to do that, and another engineer to deal with the wooden balconies if they want to remain in place. The structural from going two floors down to the basement, what would be needed in that. That's Wentworth, this is all Wentworth. This is a bunch of pictures they took. This is JK, you all know about the electrical issues. It's $2,100, they said they could fix all the electrical issues. This is a scary one. We do have lead in the building, it has to be addressed, it's on, on the MMA thing. There's no price here, but the lead is in the ceiling on the second floor, which means all that ceiling would have to be taken down. If you leave the ceiling down, you're gonna lose the sprinkle system out.
Is that the tiles, the tin ceiling above the...
Right where the theater is, that suspended ceiling.
Yeah, then there's the tin above it.
Up above, that's a metal ceiling. That's all wet paint that's, that's falling down.
I just make it, I figure.
This is the Ad Hoc Committee, that came up with a whole bunch of stuff on here. And they came up with a grand total of 309,022 to deal with most of the stuff on the bottom, correct? And they're 322. These other guys I mentioned back here. Wentworth was a little over 400, they, they estimated a little over 400,000.
And what year is this?
This is all this year.
This is all this year, alright.
I'm just trying to share all this information, so it doesn't look like they've done anything behind the scenes. I know Jeff hasn't seen it. 400,000, just for the base. You're talking 300,000 here, and you got some other things in with it, so it's expensive. Don't know what this is gonna be. This right here is a very good report. This is another derrigo engineering, we're using law on roads and stuff. They have nothing to do with this building, they don't want the work, it's too big for them. But they went through, I think you have a copy of this.
I did.
And they did a pretty good history on the building. And they're, they, they give some numbers in here with stamp, they're, they're close to 900,000. That's to fix everything, top of the line. Roughly.
Question?
Roughly. This was Cappin's Associates. You had, you had them here in 2004, you've had them back here in 2019, you had them here in '22. This is what I'm leading up to, is we can have Cappin's come back. Cappin's have worked on this building for a long time, they have all the design plans, they've been in the building, they've seen the building, they've worked on the building, they know the history of the building. And to go out and get another engineering firm to come in and give us an assessment of the building and give us that bid package that we want, they're gonna have to start from scratch, and they're gonna have to do all that handwork where Cappin's already has this. And they can come in for 7,500 dollars, and they can tell you structurally what's wrong with the whole building, and then they can go to a bid pack. So I guess it's up to the board whether you want me to pursue a whole bunch of engineering companies to come in, or it'd be my suggestion for 7,500, Cappin's has all the blueprints and stuff, is to have them come back for the 7,500, do the work that needs to be done. And then if you wanna go to a bid pack, they, they can still provide that. Their total bid pack was between 100 and 150,000. That was to get all the blueprints, do all the research, gather all the contractors, and gather the bids, and then monitor the work to the end, so...
And that was 150?
150,000 to do the whole thing, start to finish.
Right.
And, so...
And that's no work, that's just the engineering component of all of that?
That's getting all the bids for the contractors and...
The 100 to 150, we see the project beginning to end. We monitor it, get the contractors.
Right, got it, right.
So that's, that's the whole thing with the building, wherever we at, with the different engineers we talk to and stuff, and you gotta decide where you wanna go, if you wanna spend that 7,500, how you wanna do it. If you wanna do it. And you're, anybody who wants to see this, you can see this, come in, I'll go through it over here or whatnot, and it's pretty straightforward and stuff. But I wanted to get it out there so everybody could see what we've, we've done.
Well, but there's numbers now. It's numbers, that's actually somewhat of a better idea of what exactly it's gonna be.
This one has a stamped engineering thing on it, but I wouldn't go by the numbers till somebody really looks at a wall.
Till you get in the bid.
Yeah, yeah.
And he also goes in to say, "Put 20% on top of that just in case." You don't know, you don't know what the fee changes are gonna be.
Absolutely.
You really don't. But there may be a marriage between this and the Ad Hoc Committee work they've done, the people that can do some of that, you know, but... You gotta get to the point where you find out what's wrong with the building. All the things that are wrong with the building.
Oh, I agree, I think if we continue with Cappin's, it's the cheapest route. Because they've had so much, they've already got 50% of the workload done as far as the analysis. Whereas if you go to somebody else, you're gonna start fresh. But if you don't ask for quotes, then people are under the impression you're just pushing work to one person.
That's the PPA, what do you think? Just asking opinion. Do you want three or four engineering groups? You, you wanna go with Cappin's, they've already done the homework?
Right, I mean, it seems like it's pretty easy to figure out nowadays. Pretty good reasoning as to what it's gonna cost. I mean, we can have one person, or multiple people that have already been there, seen the building, know what they're working with. I mean, they're gonna have just as much input as...
Cappin's are in the 900, but I'd hate to say to you right today, Cappin's said 900,000, Derrigo says 900,000, and we come in with 1,400,000 dollars. You know, we're gonna have egg on those.
Oh, yeah, you're gonna have to. What do you think, what do you wanna do? Do you wanna bid up with multiple engineering groups, or you just wanna roll with Cappin's? Should we get this going? I don't, I'm gonna pay you either way.
I guess I'm not prepared to answer that.
I just wanna get a hold of somebody and get it to the point where we can get some numbers.
And this is the first time you guys heard this.
Right, right. And, sorry, go ahead.
I don't think we have enough information to make a motion on at this point.
Well, if you just send out a general email, looking at what we wanna do. We need an actual, we need an engine frame, them to provide us with a big bid package We need an actual, we need an engine frame them to provide us with a big bid package of what the whole entire project's gonna cost. And what would their fee be to get us to that point? Shoot it to, cause they don't have time to look at the building to get us to there. To give you that number, do they?
They might, that's why, I mean, people would want in there hacking up the building, doing stuff to it.
Well, I mean, just to give us the number of.
We're not trying to be negative. We'd shoot it out there saying, what's your thoughts? It's just gonna be thoughts.
Yeah, we need to know, are they gonna charge us twenty thousand or fifty thousand?
I think carpenters wanted to see the building again, even though they'd been in it, for that.
Well, there's a big difference between looking at the building and what are they gonna charge us to put it to bid package?
Right, but I mean.
And dealing with it to that level as far as contractors and everything else.
I think, I think they're gonna wanna ask us, that's all I'm saying.
Right, but we just need to know what it's gonna cost to get us there. They would have an idea if it's twenty or fifty, I would think.
Yeah, that's on the cap in the one, from start to finish.
Cause the derago's out, cause they don't have time?
No, this is too big of a project and that's not there for a day.
Yeah, I mean, there's civil engineers.
They are engineers, they didn't know what to look for, but that's, that's not what they wanna get into. They're to mainly roads.
Yep, yep.
Drainage, hydraulics, so when they talk about foundation and drainage, they're talking their line of work.
Sure.
Now you get into wood, you're talking to that other guy, cause he's in the book, you know, so. It's just to get the right people, the right fit.
Right, right.
And I just wanted to make sure before we went any further, what you want to do as a board, is to what direction we're gonna move in here.
Well, thanks for that overview, that, then, I do think, I don't know how both of you feel about the deragos, uh, engineers just overview of where we are today, I thought it was well done.
Yeah, that was pretty straightforward.
Yeah, yeah, um, I don't know whether it's, uh, whether we should put it, put that on our website so people can read that and inform themselves.
I think that's a very good idea.
Okay, um, so, Michelle?
There's quite a few papers though, isn't it?
Oh, yeah, that's alright, right?
Thirty pages.
That's fine.
I think it was twenty-two.
What we did is we took what they saw, plus what carpenters had, and the history of the building.
But that's what was good about it, all of that, in a summary of, you got to see everything.
It did bring it all together and, and, um, it's sort of from an outsider, an outside, outside engineering firm. Again, it's not their, it's not their body of work, um, which is good, because they're just looking at it, um, and then just sort of overviewing where we are today, and I think that would be helpful for the, for the townspeople to. I found it very helpful, um.
And again, I wanted to do this, cause I don't know how much longer I'm gonna be here, so I, I need, I needed some direction on what we're gonna do. Do I have enough time to accomplish different things here, so?
I mean, I do think, in my brain, um, going with carpenters because they have a history, because they have historical knowledge of the building and they have worked on it professionally before, um, it seems as though they can pick up where they left off, as far as, I mean, obviously time has happened and, and degradation of the building has happened, but, but, you know, at least they've got, um, some of the, the work done.
And maybe it's wise to just communicate with them that we understand you have this and we're looking for you to apply that information without charge.
Right, right.
You've already done it, you've already paid.
They're not, they're not. Already asked.
You didn't.
There's seventy-five hundred to come and to go through all building again. Go through a couple of walls.
Guarantee you not to ever fail. And. I said, I'll call them, I guarantee I'm not.
They don't charge on the cap.
Um, the other thing that I just wanna bring up right now is that, you know, I've gotten many phone calls about people, um, just recently about people trying still to get people in that building and, and this, this rub and push with regard to engineering's going in the building. And that's a whole nother story. And it is very important, um, in, to, to, for people to understand that, that, that is, we are doing the business of the town to inform ourselves with regard to that building. And that's why an engineer that the town has hired to go into that building is covered with our limited amount of insurance that we have to carry on that building, um, but we cannot have contractors in there. And I had a call today about a roofing contractor going in there to look at the slate roofing. Um, and no matter what I say, there's this rub and push as far as, well, then why can the engineers go in? So I just try.
They can do their own policy too.
They do, they do, and, and again, that's, we're working toward trying to find a solution for all of us. Um, um, to, and so, anyway, you know, for those who listen to the tape, it's just trying to clarify that, um, because you get these phone calls and then you're, you're having to go through it again and again.
Those, we're following a process that we adopted in our town meeting. As a town, as a group, we decided that we were going to engineer it and that is the step we're on.
That's right.
We're not any steps beyond that.
That's exactly right, that's exactly right.
And we need to stay on that step until it's time to take the next step.
That's right, and that's what Jeff is trying to guide us through, and, um, so I think, you know, I, I, I mean, we don't need to vote.
No, but I think we gotta come up with something, because I just feel like we're kicking this again.
Yeah, a little bit.
We gotta come up with something for a general, you know, whether or not it's a letter that goes out, this is the history of the building, this is the, what we expect from you, and no different than what we was talking about, about competitive building policy, that's exactly what it is. This is the project, this is what we checked out of it, and send it.
To the engineer?
Yeah.
Yeah, to the firms.
We need a price back with a timeline. And like even a derago, they're not interested, cause it's out of their wheelhouse or whatever, fine, they would, they wouldn't reply, but. And then, I mean, carpenter knows where they're at, so I would hope their bid would be less, because they do have all that knowledge and history than somebody else that you start fresh with, but we're not gonna know that if we can't get that letter out.
And at what point are you gonna include the committee that was to be formed for this? Uh. And the warrant it said? To have committee members be a part of the process?
That was Excel, wasn't it?
Pardon me?
Didn't you cross that out? On the other part of town.
Did we?
It was a decision.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Your lawyer said that it would, wouldn't hold.
Right, but we do want to, we, I mean, I mean, we're gonna need, we're gonna need as much help as we can with people being involved in this. Um, but right now, this is.
They can't get bids for you, I mean, like.
Right, right, exactly.
But that's why I was reading this, so you can see what was going on, you're, I'm caught up with you, I got your, your committee report, you're caught up with me, so you know what I've done in the background. And so we're all on the playing field right here at the moment.
Right.
We'll get some more information, and I don't see why that information can't be shared, uh, and that's how we're gonna get good work done.
Yep.
So even when we get the bids back, I mean, we can, once we start getting some bids back, us and the committee and the board can talk back and forth a pro work on against whoever to make that decision.
Yeah, that would be good, that would be great.
Really, once it's stamped with that engineer, it's all, I mean, it's really, it's even gonna be out of our hands. It's gonna follow their process. I really like the idea of posting what we're finding, um, on our town's website. We have to have a subcategory just for that building, so that people can follow along.
It's great, because then when people call, then you can refer them to the town website, so everyone is reading the same information, cause how I describe it, or how you describe it, or your deal can be different and can vary, so it, it's great. The more we can share information, so everybody's reading the same written information. And the number of pages doesn't matter, right?
It shouldn't, no, so what I'll do is I'll have Sam actually make a separate tab specifically for this project.
Perfect.
And then we can try to.
We did have one.
Did you, okay. I don't know if it's still there or not.
The town hall, there was a town hall tab.
It's still there.
Yeah.
And then some of the carpenter stuff was up there.
Oh, yeah, you're right, you're right.
Cause we was doing it back then, as soon as all the stuff was coming in, was putting it up there.
That's right, and the letters from MMA were on there, from, as far as the insurance is on, are on there.
Okay.
Um, so, um, okay. So, uh, any other, any other, I'm glad we got that done.
We already did the roads, we already talked about that.
Okay, uh, so item ten, select board concerns, any concerns?
Coldwood's plugged on Anderson, but Mike's gonna go on.
Okay. Do we need to talk about that, you're all set?
Well, it's depending on where the jam went up or whatever, I'm not sure if that's gonna be a.
Did you hear that, Jeff?
Coldwood on Anderson's plug.
How about Silverstone Road? Well, that explains too, mine was just like seven years ago.
Town Hall's road cemetery entrance was raised and rushing and then, so when they were addressing the road, we could just look at that, but it was.
Yep.
Yeah. It sounds like a lot of stuff is growing in, I mean, that's always the sense in the springtime. Yeah, I know, I know, so.
Before I thought of spraying, but I don't know how well that would. State does it, still does it.
Works really well.
Saves a lot of money.
When you see those big, you know, CMP power lines and nothing's growing underneath them for years and years and years and years.
Twenty-three, two years ago, and it went out through the spray.
Yep, yep.
You cut it, you grind it.
It.
It comes very bad. The guy I bought my farm from died from Alzheimer's disease.
From spraying, from spraying, oh, really? Yeah, yeah, no, I mean, obviously it's, um, but anyway, we, and we, in the past, we have had, you know, big, the, our, the guy who mulched for us with the big, big mulching head on the, on a, a big rig.
Nice.
Super nice, and unfortunately, he died. And he's got a big mulching head?
I wonder if he bought the.
Oh, he may have.
Do you remember his name already?
No, nice guy though.
Super nice guy.
Oh, man, yeah, he was a nice man.
The guy that had that business passed away.
Yeah, I believe his name is, he does a lot of roadside mowing for a long time.
Well, this, this was him, he passed away and maybe somebody over that way bought his business, but.
Yeah.
It's worth, I, I mean, that is, it's crucial to get that stuff pushed back and mulch.
He's capable.
So I have one last thing.
Yes.
We had a, a person that was overcharged last year for trailers. Um, he was put in as a camper trailer rather than just a regular utility trailer.
Oh.
Um, so he's now moved to Dexter and they told him to come back and see if he could be reimbursed because he was overcharged. Um, Jeff and I have talked about it, um, the guy, we owe him three hundred eighty-eight forty-three, so just K P O L O. Um, if it's okay with you, go ahead and reimburse that back to the gentleman.
Was it a one year?
Um, yep, it was a one-year registration, cause with XIs, the program won't let you do two years.
Oh, right, okay, yeah, I mean, I, I don't think we need to vote on that.
Yeah, just more.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Anything else?
That's it, come in.
Okay, so the only other thing we need to discuss is our next meeting, um.
I put June fifth, but I wasn't sure exactly, but that is.
The next meet?
Yeah, that is a Wednesday of the week.
Okay. We all in favor of that, June fifth? Okay, at four PM?
Okay.
Um, okay, I'll make a motion to, to adjourn the meeting? Okay, all in favor, three in favor? Oh, thanks.
What's that? No, I, I got, I think eight is about the sheer.